All right, we're on Facebook. We're all set. All right.
Welcome to the June 8, 2021 State Council meeting.
Mayor Webb. Mayor Protem Lekiro. Councilmember Sullivan. Councilmember McFall. Councilmember Londo.
Alternative Gardens.
I make a motion that we go into executive session for discussion regarding.
Can you do legalization? Alternative time.
Does support? Okay, for those of you.
Thank you.
Let's try it again. Back to the executive session of June 8, 2021. Motion to accept the executive session. This is a move that we accept the approved recommendations from legal council. Anyone here have any civic announcements for the public? Anyone? Charlie Cornell.
Hi, Mayor and Council and City Manager. I hope the executive session was good. I just want to say a couple of quick things. First, Hazel Park, when thinking about COVID. Hazel Park is just under 50% in vaccination. And so if I want to make sure everyone knows that if anyone has a question or would like to reach out, this is my cap, by the way, please call me at 248-807-4347. Would be happy to answer any questions anyone has about the vaccine or where to get it. And second, I saw that on the agenda today is a first reading of the Source of Income Ordinance. I want to applaud Hazel Park for joining in with Southfield, Troy, Ferndale, Oak Park in thinking about passing this or talking about and doing the first reading. This is a good thing for landlords because it gives them guaranteed income. This is a good thing for tenants because it gives them access to housing. Mind you, almost a third of the voucher holders are people that face source of income discrimination in Oakland County are 62 and over. There are several hundred veterans that are on wait lists that are trying to gain access to housing using vouchers. And also, this is a good thing for communities because it makes us more inclusive. So I just want to applaud Councilmember Alyssa Sullivan's hard work on this and leadership. And excited to see what happens.
Charlie. Anyone else receiving announcements? Anyone who is in the council? Anyone who takes the public discussion, like open up the public discussion for public? Anyone from the public who's on Zoom? If there are any audience who want to speak, come up to the podium. Name the address for record. Right there in front of the glass.
Good evening. My name is Michael Young. I live at 1H3A East Wilson, Hazel Park, Michigan. What brings me here today is a issue I'm having with a lot next to my house. Business bought the lot and constructed an overnight parking lot inches from my backyard. The lot is made of crushed concrete. They are parking 20 vehicles inches from my backyard. I'm sorry, I'm nervous. All their fluids, there's nothing to stop these fluids from seeping into the ground and possibly contaminating my property. I've never seen a parking lot made of crushed concrete in the city. I drove around and look on Gannar, Nine Mile. I see all kinds of parking lots that are here and being constructed. And they are either concrete, but they are asphalt. I'm also concerned with a business is put up a parking lot next to my home without any type of a barrier. Concrete wall. I mean, I have tons of pictures that go around the city.
There's a lot of violations, what you're telling us, sorry.
I had gone to the code enforcement. I was basically left out of the building. I apologize for my speech. I had cancer surgery and I cannot speak as well. I was hoping to not have to come here tonight. I don't know if you checked your email, but I sent every one of you an email last week, minus you, Mr. Mayor, because your email address was not there. I'm hoping this issue is resolved. This started back in November of last year, where they put this crushed concrete down. I sent an email to the planning department, the guy who runs that. I received no response. I sent it again. I received no response. I went to code enforcement. She came out and looked and issued me a warning to clean my yard. Which, no problem, I had to issue. But we are still, I still go out in my backyard. I cannot enjoy my backyard at all. I go back and I look right here, there is 20 vehicles parked on my fence line. I don't understand how this could possibly happen. Maybe somebody can look into this and maybe get back with me, you know, before the summer is over. So I can enjoy my yard. I would really appreciate it.
But we're going to send, we're going to send a really perfect out. See you turning heads.
I mean, this is bad. All these vehicles just run off, it's going straight into the ground. It's going to contaminate everything. It's going to lower my property value.
We'll take a look at this and investigate this. Maybe we're going to do a construction site there. So we'll find out what this is, what the status of that is. And we can see.
How will I find out where we are on this issue as you forward?
You can call my office.
Thank you very much. Thank you all of you. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public discussion? Anyone who closes public discussion?
City Mayor, before you can set agenda, I forgot during civic announcements. I just want to thank all of the residents of Oakland for two outstanding ceremonies that we had here at City Hall. In the past couple of weeks, the first one was to honor our fallen service members on Memorial Day. We had one of the best turnouts for our ceremony to honor the fallen that I can remember in the past 20 years. And then last Saturday, we had the flag raising for the pride flag event. And that was also an extraordinary good turnout. And I want to thank all of our residents into those two events. And I want to thank all the members of council for showing up to get 100% participation from our mayor and city council at both events. And we also had a great turnout and participation from our department heads as well. So thank you to all of you who are involved with the city. And thank you to all of the residents and our many friends who came out to bulk up those ceremonies. Special thank you to the Hazel Park Gadget White Club for the vibrant.
Thank you. Motion to approve this. Move approval of the construction items, one through five, support. Question, exception? Mr. Mayor, reports license consideration.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, you have the information in front of you with respect to granting of these licenses and the administration. Last statute will require you.
I think, great, can we make one motion for all of these? Or can you?
Separate motions, I believe.
After reviewing the city manager's report, based on all the factors in the ordinance, I recommend approval of applicant number nine, tip-top crops, class A medical and recreational pro application. Support.
Question, exception? Question passed.
Mr. Mayor, I move to after reviewing the city manager's report, and based on all the factors in the ordinance, I recommend approval of applicant number 10, Yan Green's, Class A medical and recreational pro application. Support.
Question, exception? It's on the item.
Mr. Mayor, after reviewing the city manager's report, and based on all the factors in the ordinance, I move approval of applicant number 11, Ajax Wellness, Class A Medical and Recreational Pro Application. Support.
Question? Question? Ball, please.
Mr. Mayor, after reviewing the city manager's report and noting the past code and regulatory issues with the applicant, I move denial, Class Medical and Recreational Pro License for applicant number 12, Peron Holdings LLC.
Support.
Question? Question?
Mr. Mayor, after reviewing the city manager's report, and based on all the factors in the ordinance, I recommend approval of applicant number 13 and 14, Quality Roots, Class B Medical and Recreational Pro Application and Medical and Recreation Process Application. All right.
Question? Question? Looking at. Item two, approval, whose source of income housing dissonance, first reading.
Mr. Mayor, this ordinance is brought to you with the request of Councilmember Alyssa Sullivan, also with the support of our county commissioner, Charlie Cornell. You guys know Charlie, he's here, he's there, he's everywhere. So again, the administration has drafted it with a few minor tweaks and changes. And we are respectfully requesting approval.
I would like to move approval on first reading of the ordinance of prohibition of source of income housing dissonance.
Support. Question, anyone?
I have just minor discretion. I just want to point out that I appreciate everybody's interest in letting me bring this forward and understanding the importance of this. In Oakland County, the rates that homelessness affects and then average, a higher percentage for people of color, women, people with disabilities and elderly in Oakland County, a higher percentage rate than other counties. An ordinance like this helps to ensure more accessible housing for people, including veterans, people of color, women, people with disabilities, and people over the age of 62. Currently, in Section 8 housing, almost 30% of recipients of Section 8 housing are people over the age of 62. I don't think that it is ever acceptable for veterans, or for the elderly, or people that are poor, to be homeless. I don't think that it is an acceptable thing for a community to overlook the ability to make housing more accessible when people. And I think in my personal experience, when I purchased my home, I used an FHA Michigan loan. And I had a very difficult time getting somebody to sell a home to me. It's how I ended up here, and I am grateful for that because it's one of those happy accidents in life, right? I ended up landing where I needed to be. And now I'm able to bring this ordinance to our community to help other people have access and have more ability to come home. And I think that is the best gift you can give somebody.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Also, like the chairman, I had an interesting conversation with Jeff and Ed in the city's office earlier today. And they noted that back in 2008, 2009, the kind of was in the complete opposite direction where people were actually favoring Section 8 housing because of it being essentially guaranteed income for landlords. Now it's run the complete opposite direction. It was wrong then, it's wrong now.
Motion passes. To the board's commissions, new business, anybody who can do something.
Oh, yes, you missed the, the public hearing for the reprogramming CDVG funds. Administration is.
We'll open up the court public hearing to approve the resolution of 0.06-015-21, reprogramming of the PY2006 CDVG funds. Anyone here wishing to speak? Open the public hearing. Anyone who closed the public hearing for the CDVG funds? And we will move back to our agenda, sorry about that.
Just very briefly, guys, so we had $4,000 up the road from a demo thing. We can't do anything with that stuff. We have strict asbestos regulations and the amount of houses that are asbestos in. So basically, we're proposing to reprogram the code enforcement, which is our most obvious need for this stuff. So it's just $4,000, but we'll go directly forward to what we do prior to 2020 and 2021.
Thank you, Jeff. Business, anybody who can do business? You can put department heads, let's see, if you can be back here. You got any comments? I see a Tom Jones. How you doing, Mr. Jones? The American Council. I just want to update what we're like, since the project is underway. We did mill the road today. They actually moved it up because of weather, different things. So they were out there today. They plan on doing a process called leveling road tomorrow. And they're looking at creating a new surface sometime next week. I don't have a hard day. The road I did drive through tonight, it is drivable. All houses have access to the driveways. And the things going as it should.
Can you tell me, will residents continue to have access for the interior, you think?
Yeah, so research scene is pretty low impact job. So like today, there might have been a little bit of, as the vehicle goes by their house, actually grinding the road, puts the debris into another truck and it rolls down the road. So very minimal impact to the houses. We do have an engineer on site and hutch paving is out there. They're actually using flaggers today, controlling the road so traffic can get through. Very minimal. I know as paving asphalt goes down pretty quickly and it is hot when it goes down. But as it cools, you can actually drive on it pretty quickly. So pretty low impact job that they're doing. To be wrapped up here within a week, week and a half already with paint and everything.
It's going to be good paint, that's right, I'm. Paint that's visible, especially when wet.
We're not guaranteeing any paint.
Better be, I'm not painting.
We're getting paint after the.
I have to go with the speaking here myself.
I've got a spray paint can or a roller.
Who can have signal lines in this range? No, hopefully this will be back to the dirt. We're aware and trying to move that out.
After guaranteeing, I'm not guaranteeing paint. I guarantee lots of things, but for whatever reason, we seem to end up with a problem with those lines on that street. Those lines ever since. Never mind. Never mind.
Thank you. The other department heads, which is.
What Finkley put it on, he doesn't think he actually made a motion and voted on the CDVG reprogramming.
I really messed up.
No, it's just, I just need to, I need to vote for the resolution so they actually approve it so that.
Make a, you know, watch.
I'll make a motion that we approve resolution 06-015-21, reprogramming of the PY217, 2017 CDVG funds.
Right, that's been. A floor discussion on the CDVG funds. Mayor said. Okay. Motion passed. Please back to the occasions from the city attorney.
I have nothing, Mr. Mayor.
City Manager? Just to remind everybody that we'll continue to do a pretty good job here at Hazel Park, even though Michigan's system of municipal finance is fundamentally broken. And I wanted to again thank Mayor and Council for their support of all of our issues. And I know that some of you had to return to get to some of those ceremonies. You guys had to cut vacations, actually a day short, several of you did. And I want the people at home to know that it was important enough, the members of this council can hear with the community that literally many of them cut short vacations memorial that we can be here for that memorial. So as we remember, our fallen service members, as we just commemorated on the anniversary of D-Day, we know that the freedoms that we have are not free. And that those who put their lives in harm's way to protect us, never forget their sacrifice and service. So thank you all.
I would like to thank everybody for coming out on Saturday for the fourth annual pride flag raising outside of City Hall here. We had a great turnout, beautiful weather. So thank you again to everybody. I want to remind everyone that this Thursday, Corton Health will be back at the rec center for the second shots. They're also giving first shots of the Moderna vaccine, that's 18 and older. They're also doing blood pressure checks and HIV testing. And that is at the rec center this Thursday, June 10th, from 3:00 to 8:00. And that is at the rec center this Thursday, June 10th, from 3:00 to 8:00 p.m.
Oh, what's up, Hazel Park? I'd like to recognize Councilmember McCall for a wonderful pride ceremony. Thank you for having seen such an impactful event. Being able to see this as a resident, being able to participate as a council member was really powerful for me. And it was worth being in town as well as the Memorial Day. Did come back one day or. In addition, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Sullivan for the COVID-19 clinic that happened today. Her and Mike have done an excellent job bringing these resources to Hazel Park and making it convenient for residents to receive the vaccine in their city without having to move. And lastly, I did want to talk about a federal program. It's called the Emergency Broadband Benefit. If you are eligible, receive a $50 a month subsidy from the federal government for the cost of internet access, as well as a one-time $100 subsidy for a device. And a lot of people are mistaken under the assumption that it's difficult to access and that eligibility is challenging security to spell that rumor intelligently that your income is at or below 135% of the federal poverty guideline. If you qualify for lifeline benefits through SNAP, Medicaid, SSI, federal public housing assistance, Veterans and Survivor's pension benefit, or if you experienced a substantial loss of income since February 29th, 2020, due to furlough, and you have a total household income in 2020 that are below $99,000 per single filers and $198,000 for joint filers, you qualify for this. This program exists so long as it remains funded, so it is important to qualify early. And all you need to do is go to getemergencybroadband.org.
I would like to echo you's adherence to the fact that broadband access, that benefit program is great. I did a post on it a few months back, but I helped a friend fill out their paperwork for it. And it was so easy. It took us literally five minutes or less online. And then within a, I want to say within maybe three days, she got her email saying she was approved. And it automatically credited her already existing cable bill where she gets her internet provided. So that's a huge benefit, $50 is a lot of money to many people in our community, myself included. So I highly recommend people look into that. I also want to thank everybody for making our Memorial Day celebration, I don't want to call this celebration, a Memorial Day tribute to our fallen veterans. A success this year, it was really great to see everybody come out. I thoroughly enjoyed the bike ride, even though my chain almost fell off. And Mike Webb saved the day by helping me put my bike chain back on real quickly. I want to thank our officers for leading the parade and our firefighters for following up behind. It was great for them to participate. And then also, I want to thank everybody that attended our pride flag raising, including our chief who came in on his day off. Thank you for attending that, it was great to see you there, and all of the other dignitaries that came. I think it really is such a great opportunity to just reiterate how really truly a friendly city Hazel Park is. I also want to thank everybody that participated in today's vaccine clinic that was hosted by our local business, Color Aid Studio downtown Jhar, and in partnership with Shango today, people that came in, they were, at this time, we call it pokes for jokes. Because we love a good, we love a good pun here in Hazel Park. And then I also want to, I again want to thank everybody for actively featuring me to this Source of Income Distribution Ordinance that we passed on first reading today. So we'll obviously go through that again, but and a huge shout out to Charlie Caddell, Commissioner Caddell, for all of his help with this and his, his communication with me and his availability, availability for me to reach out to him last night. I was able to call him at like 8:45 with some last minute questions. And also that man is everywhere. So thank you for all you do. And I want everybody to keep getting vaccinated. If you, you know somebody that needs a vaccine, we will continue to have vaccine clinics in our community so that there is access for you. These all, again, these vaccines are free, there's no cost for these vaccines. So if you have the ability to get vaccinated, you are keeping people who cannot get vaccinated safe. So please continue to encourage those of us who can get vaccinated to get vaccinated. And Washington.
It's a very good meeting. We settled some issues that were law and legal lawsuits that come along. For the fun of the end, I see, and I want to thank everybody on Zoom, Facebook, for participating. If you have children, hug them every day and tell them they love you. Have a great weekend.
Mr. Mayor, I almost forgot to recognize Uclando for the best clip of the ceremony on Saturday. The best clip, the best joke.
I got a big clip.
He looks great.
And that's all you're saying. We'll leave it that.
He took that with him all day. He cited that like three times when I saw it. He told so many people about that.
And his comment, I can't repeat his comments, a move after the ceremony, but it was a jell.
I can go ahead with you. Anyways. It was a wanted to, some important business. Would be a grandfather.
Yay.
My daughter and son-in-law, they've been, they finally were able to achieve a goal. And I'm very happy for them and for their success, very happy. For a while, but potentially having your first, first addition to our family in years. Thank you. And I want to get back to the part of the Memorial Day festival, what you said, event. It was very touching, it's, you know, all the people out there. But I also want to point out of one girl that played taps for us. And wanted to say a special thank you, and I like, she was outstanding. I would like to give a proclamation to her, her contribution, her time on her day out. It was, she showed up to do that for us, so thank you.
She did a great job.
She really wanted the job.
We, we might be able to find some civic empowerment to give her.
Yeah, they're waiting for it. It'll be nice. Thank you.
She did a very good job.
We go to the pride flag raising of June. And June is our pride ordinance month. And I think we all look to the future differently now than we did 20 years ago. We do. And diversity and anti-discrimination is a big issue in our country. And I don't think we have the issue here as much as other parts of the world. But we cannot let your guard down by anti. We can't. I grew up in a very diverse community in Southwest. There was a lot of discrimination back in the seventies. But the city, a lot of people get along, even then, like black, Hispanic, whatever. And looking at today's, thinking, what happened, we want back. People just don't have the love for each other anymore. They just have so much hatred. And it's, it's hard and sad to see that. But I do want to say thank you for everybody that came out, all the, all the officials that came out in this, in the, in the, in the event. And I was very happy to see how big a crowd we had. And I do want to say thank you to all my colleagues, staff, for all putting out all the events. Doing as much as we can to promote our hearing. And with that, I'd like to motion to, motion to adjourn. Thank you.